We currently have a forum, but we are waiting. Our chair should be joining shortly. And here he is. Hi Chair Niblin.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry about my technical challenges this evening, but I think with everyone's help, I solved them.
No worries. We are ready to take it from the top.
Excellent.
You didn't miss anything.
Thank you.
Before we start, can we give a round of applause for Chair Niblin in his new position? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is that off the record? I don't know.
I'll take it for the record. That's very cool. I appreciate it. Thank you. I wanted to go ahead, though, before we had jumped into the actual specifics of the meeting, go ahead and share some information about the way we'll be conducting this evening's meeting. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4th of 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under Government Code Section 54953 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code Section 54953, this meeting will be held via teleconference only and will not be physically open to the public. Commissioners and city staff essential to this meeting will be teleconferencing into the meeting by audio and/or video. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom. Participation via Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Excuse me. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if you're dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. And so with that, we'll go ahead then and sort of move into the merits of the March 7, 2022 meeting, and I'll ask for a roll call. Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Domarath.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
Commissioner Niblin.
Present.
Thank you. So we'll move then to the salute to the flag. And maybe this evening, I will ask Commissioner Lille to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lille. So next, we have administrative business. But before we take the items of administrative business, I'll ask if there's any public comment with respect to any of the items of administrative business that we have this evening. And I'll turn it to Mr. Murdock for assistance on that.
Thank you, Chair. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. So we'll move then to the specifics of the administrative business to start with approval of the order of agenda. And I'll ask if there is a motion to approve your agenda. Commissioner Berman.
I'd like to propose that we actually change the order of the agenda and move the item number two on today's agenda before item number one. So that's bringing the consideration item number two before the new public hearing item number one.
Okay. So we have a motion then from Commissioner Berman and I to approve the order of agenda subject to a revision in the order so that item two will be considered before item one. Commissioner Hauser.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the order of agenda as amended. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarath.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So we've approved the order of agenda as amended. Next, we have approval of minutes. We've got our minutes from the meeting of February 22, 2022. A lot of twos in there. Is there any discussion of these minutes or in the alternative, or maybe in addition, a motion to approve them? Commissioner Berman.
I mean, that we approve the minutes from February 22, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman's moved that we approve the minutes of our meeting of February 22. Commissioner Godwin.
I second Commissioner Berman's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. So can we have a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarath.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That then will take us to designation of liaison to the City Council meeting. It looks like, maybe I'll ask for a little bit of clarification, but it looks like March 14, 2022, there may be a need for a liaison with respect to a couple of matters, the Talbot Legislative Approvals and the Olympian Appeal. Is that right, Mr. Murdock?
That was correct, Chair, up until publication of this agenda packet. Since then, we've decided that we will be continuing the TBD Talbot public hearing. So the agenda for March 14 City Council meeting, or the liaison rather, would be for the TBD Olympian Appeal only.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues if there's anybody who's willing, able to serve as a liaison on the 14th of March for the Olympian Appeal. I'm wondering how long I can take the awkward silence here. That's next Monday. Commissioner Godwin.
I can do it if no one else is interested.
There may be others who are interested, but you know, I don't see anybody else with their hands up. So Commissioner Godwin, I'm going to take you up on your generous offer to represent the Commission as our liaison at the March 14 meeting.
Chair Niblin, if you would, please allow me. It will come up in my staff comments later, but to clarify, it will be an in-person meeting. So it'd be helpful to confirm Commissioner Godwin can make that arrangement.
Commissioner Godwin, I'll ask if you can make that arrangement.
I can do that.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. That will be the first planning commission flag showing at an in-person meeting for a long time. So I appreciate you taking that on. So that then will take us to oral communications. And this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. And Mr. Murdock, I'll ask that you help us through this process of determining whether we have oral communication.
Thank you, Chair. There are no hands raised.
Okay.
Actually, as I say that, one hand went up.
Okay, well, why don't we hear from that person?
All right. Just allow me a moment to get set up. And it will be Mary Ann. That will be our first speaker in just a minute. Mary Ann, please go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Mary Ann. Are you there? If so, please proceed.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Please go ahead.
I'm not 100% sure you can see me. I'm on my iPhone, but I'm trying to participate here. I just wanted to come tonight and thank, you know, John, you have been an amazing appointment. And I wanted to thank you. And I wanted to publicly congratulate you on becoming the county council. And so I just, I just wanted to say that your service at Pacifica has been amazing. And I hope you continue to service in many, many ways. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Really appreciate that. Mr. Murdock, are there any other public comments?
No other hands are raised, Chair.
Thank you. Well, I'm gratified that we took that one. So thank you. We'll go ahead then and come back to our new public hearings. And the first one is a consideration item. And this is a review of the proposed, given the change in the order of the agenda, we're going to take the review of the proposed, excuse me, review of the proposed Hotel Way Right-of-Way summary vacation for consistency with the general plan and local land use plan. The recommended sequel action with respect to this matter is a common sense exemption pursuant to Section 15061B3, Class 1 categorical exemption, Section 15301, and Class 5 categorical exemption, Section 15305 of the Sequel Guidelines. And the recommended action is to adopt a resolution finding the right-of-way vacation consistent with the general plan and the local land use plan. I'll go ahead and ask staff for a report, although I do see that we have a couple of hands up, like Commissioner Lille and Commissioner Ferguson.
Chair Niblin, I'll need to recuse myself from this item due to presumed conflict of interest due to my residence in relation to those items. So per our protocol, I'll go on mute and turn off my video.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ferguson.
Same issue, apparently. Commissioner Lille and I were very close to each other.
No good. Well, we'll see you in a little bit then. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, with those recusals then, I'll ask that staff go ahead and share a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The City of Pacifica Public Works Department received a request to vacate a portion of the Hotel Way Right-of-Way located between Pacific Avenue and Brighton Road in the West Sharp Park neighborhood. A figure showing the location of Hotel Way is provided in the staff report. The unimproved strip of land was rejected as a public easement for street purposes in the recorded 1908 subdivision map for the area. However, state law generally requires that offers of dedication of right-of-way for street use shall remain open for acceptance of a legislative body until the legislative body formally vacates the area, which is what the city is currently seeking to do. Because Hotel Way was never accepted by the City of Pacifica or previous to incorporation, the County of San Mateo, the land is privately owned. Granting of the vacation would not change the current use of the land, which is unavailable to the public and will only confirm that the right-of-way is privately owned and not a public street, thereby removing any future claim that the city must treat this private property as a public street. The Planning Commission's role in the vacation process is to determine if the vacation is consistent with the city's general plan and the local coastal land use plan. The Planning Commission's role does not extend to the approval or denial of the vacation. The staff report presents an analysis which supports the finding that the city's vacation of the offer of dedication of Hotel Way as a public right-of-way for street use is consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. Additionally, the staff report presents an analysis which supports the finding that the action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under the common sense exemption, the Class 1 existing structures and the Class 5 minor alteration of land use exemptions. For these reasons, staff recommends adoption of the provided resolution to find vacation of Hotel Way right-of-way consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. Senior Engineer Ray Donginis and I are available tonight to help answer any questions regarding the vacation. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor, for that report and the written report as well. Are there any questions for Ms. O'Connor or for Public Works from Commissioners before we, you know, hear from the public? Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have questions, but I'm just going to echo my own request from the past few meetings. When we have these types of presentations, it would be great to see a graphic. There's 18 members of the public that are on here. And I feel like it would be helpful to everybody to see a graphic. So in the future, I would really appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Are there other comments or questions at this point for staff? Seeing none, I think what we will do then is, I guess there is an applicant in this case, Mr. Murdock. Is that where Ms. O'Connor, is there an applicant we should hear from? Or would we go to the public and, you know, straight away?
Right. The city is effectively serving as the applicant and the staff presenter in this instance. And so there's not a separate applicant to present this evening.
Understood. I think what I'll do then, assuming that staff tells me it's okay, is just go ahead then and move to public comment with respect to this item and see if there are folks who want to speak to the matter.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, that's what we'll do then. Mr. Murdock, if you could help us with that.
There are currently no hands raised, Chair Niblin.
All right. Well, that being the case, we'll go ahead and move past the public comment piece since we have no comment. And I'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion and deliberation. And alternatively, if everything appears clear, you know, a motion would also be in order if that's where we find ourselves.
Chair Niblin, in consideration of the meeting format, it looked like there may have been a couple late hands raised, perhaps trying to find the raise hand function. There are two now, and there was a third just a moment ago.
Okay.
Please, the Commission, you may want to revisit the public comment opportunity.
Well, let's take a step back then and let's hear from the members of the public who want to speak to this matter.
Thank you, Chair. I'll get us set up here in just a moment. And we will start momentarily with Cliff Lawrence.
Hello. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, Mr. Lawrence, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
And a good evening to you all. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I would like, on this occasion, having just heard what I heard, to ask if staff could maybe fill in some details because to my novice understanding, when we refer to in compliance with the general plan, we're talking about 1980. And we say what we're doing is in compliance with the local coastal plan. We're not talking about the one that's sitting on the table at Coastal Commission right now. That's my understanding. So that said, if this is actually in compliance with that 1980 general plan and that currently active, much older, local coastal plan, is it actually going to be compatible with the current general plan and local coastal plan that we are trying to put in place? Or how big is the differential between there? And how should I understand this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Murdock, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Chair. Next speaker will be Margaret Goodell.
It looks like I'm unmuted.
Yep. Ms. Goodell, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay. Are you now referring to the 570 Cressby Drive project?
No, ma'am. That's actually, we changed the order of agenda, so.
Okay, I just tuned in. So I will wait until then. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Ann. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good evening. I should actually introduce myself. This is Mary Ann Nyheart. I wanted to just speak to this particular issue because there are a number of people working in the neighborhood that have been attempting to accomplish what is before you tonight for some years. They've spent money on attorneys. They've spent money on endless number of things that are related to attempting to have what is essentially an alley and a continuation of the alley that is between my own house and my neighbor's house. And so Hotel Way has been abandoned long ago. In our case, fortunately, it was deeded back to the property by the county. But it's the same situation just below us. It's a one-block area. I appreciate your consideration tonight. And to answer the earlier comment, it's not only consistent or consistent with the 1980 plan, it is consistent with the current plan that will hopefully come before you. And so I'd like to put an end to that, that kind of discussion altogether. Thank you very much, and I look forward to your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Nyheart. Any further comments, Mr. Murdock?
Yes, Chair, there's one more hand raised. Christine Bowles, please go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Murdock. I have not had a chance to read the whole staff report tonight, and I would have actually appreciated seeing an image of where this property is located. So if that can be done, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles.
There are no more hands raised for this item. Chair Niblin.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Well, with that, then, we'll conclude. The portion of the item involves a comment from the public, and we'll come back to the Commission then for deliberation. Actually, maybe I would ask if staff could. I don't know if it's technically possible at this point, but it might be, if it was possible to actually bring up a visual of the of the area we're talking about. I think that actually would be helpful. There was a good illustration of it in the staff report.
Ms. O'Connor, did you want to undertake that screen share? Or would you like me to bring up the graphic?
I'm happy to bring up the graphic. Just give me one moment.
Okay, that'd be great. And maybe while that's happening, I'll ask if any of my colleagues in the Commission have comments or questions or deliberations they wanted to share at this point. Commissioner Hauser.
You know, from my personal perspective, I think, you know, this is consistent. I agree with staff's analysis, and I would be ready to make a motion, you know, if the rest of the Commission feels the same.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Domarath.
I'm assuming that once the property is vacated, then any issues with infrastructure, maintenance, legal responsibilities, and that becomes part of what the property owners in the area will have to undertake. Is that correct?
Mr. Donginis, would you like to speak about what city infrastructure may be in the Hotel Way Right-of-Way?
Yes. Good evening, Raymond Donginis, Senior Civil Engineer. There are currently no city infrastructure within this Hotel Way. There is a PG&E guide wire that is there. And the homeowner or the applicant, who is actually the property, will need to get a, is proposing with the, when the vacation goes to council, will dedicate a utility easement for that guide wire.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Chair Niblin, I'm ready with that visual. So I'll put that up on the screen now.
Thank you so much.
This, if everybody can see that, this is the detail from the staff report. This is Palmetto Way here and Francisco here. Brighton crosses west to east here. And then Pacific Avenue is this curved street here. The portion that we're talking about is the highlighted portion in Teal. And to give you more of a real-life view of what we're talking about, it's this segment right here between Brighton and Pacific.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. That's very helpful. I really appreciate you doing that. Any other comments or questions at this point? Deliberation? I recollect that, it must have been a few minutes ago now, Commissioner Hauser, you indicated you'd be willing to support the matter, maybe to make a motion. So maybe I'll, seeing no further deliberation on the matter, maybe I'll ask you if you're prepared to make a motion.
Thank you. And thank you, staff, for putting the graphic in the staff report up. I really appreciate that. I will move that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, adopts the resolution included in Attachment A, finding that, to the extent Hotel Way Right-of-Way between Pacific Avenue and Brighton Road and West Sharp Park had been accepted as and is a public street, the vacation thereof is consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal land use plan and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Godwin.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. So we have Commissioner Hauser's motion with Commissioner Godwin seconding it. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarath.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson. Excuse me. Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
And Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
The motion passes with five votes in favor, none opposed, and two recused.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hauser, I see your hand is still is up. Did you want to address the matter?
Thank you, Chair. This is for the next item on the agenda. I'm going to abstain from this item due to my company's business relationship with the applicant. So just wanted to say that I will be doing what my fellow Commissioners did on the last item.
Very good. We'll see you in a bit. Okay. So with Commissioner Hauser recusing herself, we're going to move to the next item on the new public hearings portion of the agenda. This is file number 2016004. It's General Plan Amendment GPA 9619,[1654.55] It's General Plan Amendment GPA 9619, rezoning RZ 19416, zoning text amendment TA 11619, Development Agreement DA 4-21, Site Development Permit PSD 81116, Use Permit UP 7616, Tentative Subdivision Map SUB 23316, Sign Permit S 12919, and Parking Exception PE 18319. Finally, Heritage Tree Removal Authorization filed by Brendan Murphy for construction of a 43,996 square foot mixed-use development consisting of three buildings with 19 residential units, including three below-market-rate units, and 3,165 square feet of commercial use, and amendments to the General Plan and Pacifica Municipal Code to allow standalone residential buildings as part of a mixed-use project in the commercial land use designation, and C2 zoning district, and rezoning of the project site from M1 to C2 zoning district at 570 Crespe Drive, and a portion of the city-owned property at 540 Crespe Drive, the location of the Pacifica Community Center. The recommended sequoia action is to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program. And staff's recommended action is to adopt a resolution to approve the project and recommend city council approval of the development agreement, general plan amendment, zoning text amendment, and a rezoning. And with all that said, I'll ask for a staff report with respect to that item.
Thank you, Chair. And as I'm pulling up the presentation for the staff report, I just wanna note for the record that Commissioners Lille and Ferguson have rejoined the public hearing.
Thank you for noting that.
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners. I'm Deputy Director of Planning, Christian Murdock. I'm joined this evening by Assistant City Manager and Planning Director Tina Waremeister, Senior Civil Engineer Brendan Dungus, Assistant City Attorney Deepa Sharma, and California Environmental Quality Act Consultant Rod Stinson from Rainey Planning and Management. The project before you this evening is a mixed-use commercial and residential project proposed at the property known as 570 Crespe Drive and on a small portion of the 540 Crespe Drive parcel that is currently owned and occupied by the City of Pacifica Community Center. You can see here on the first slide in the presentation, an image rendering what the project would look like when viewed from Crespe Drive looking to the south. And you can see here an example of the ground floor commercial storefront with three residential units above. And in subsequent renderings, you'll see an example of where the other two residential-only buildings are located towards the rear of the site. And then you can also see here the proposed freestanding sign, in this case showing the breakwater, located generally to the left of the rendering at the entry driveway to the project site. The project area is in the Lindemar neighborhood. It is immediately east of the Pacifica Community Center and immediately west of the Crespe Business Center. It is located roughly southwest of the intersection of Crespe Drive and Roberts Road. It is outside of the coastal zone, and the project site is currently an undeveloped parcel. And as I mentioned a moment ago, these project renderings show an example on the top here, effectively a continuation of that other rendering but zoomed out to show more of the project site with more of an aerial view looking down. And you can see two residential buildings at the rear that are proposed to contain residential-only uses comprised of three-story townhomes. And then you can see on the bottom a rendering of the same buildings but viewed from the south looking to the north. It gives a clearer perspective of the two residential-only buildings on either side and the mixed-use commercial and residential building to the north. And as you can see here, roughly the southern half of the project site is proposed to remain undeveloped, primarily in consideration of some biological resources that are present in the area. And so the project is proposed to cluster its development on the northern half, which has some bearing, as you'll note in the findings for project approval of the parking exception. The project components summarized in Chair Niblin's introduction of the item include a 3,165 square foot commercial area on the ground floor of the front building, 19 dwelling units, condominium dwelling units. These are proposed to be ownership units comprised of three flats, as the applicant has called them, which are the apartments or condominiums located above the ground floor commercial use, and then 16 townhome residential units of three stories each with garages at the ground floor located at the rear of the mixed-use building. The project would include three below-market rate or BMR units, two affordable to persons with low or very low income, and one unit affordable to persons with a moderate income. And as part of the development agreement, the applicant has proposed an additional cash payment of more than $200,000 for affordable housing-related purposes for the city. The project, as I noted earlier, also includes a freestanding sign to identify the development. As part of the development agreement, it proposes onsite interpretive signage, and also as part of the development agreement proposes community center parking improvements, circulation improvements, and landscaping improvements. And on the right side here, you'll see required approvals for the project, which include a development agreement, general plan amendment, text amendment, and rezoning. Those are approvals that fall in the category of legislative approvals, which I'll talk about more in a moment. And then on the bottom half of this list, a site development permit, use permit, parking exception, tentative subdivision map for the condominiums, as well as for a merger with a piece of property that the city has proposed to sell to the property developer, and then a signed permit and heritage tree removal authorization. The required actions for the Planning Commission are twofold. The first is the more conventional action on the development permits. And as I mentioned, those are summarized on the top of this list here on the right side of the screen. And then the legislative items, which involve a planning commission recommendation to the city council. And that would include the development agreement, general plan amendment, text amendment, and rezoning. Given that the Planning Commission less frequently acts on legislative approvals, I want to spend a moment to speak more about what they are and how they may ultimately be approved depending on the Planning Commission's recommendation and the city council's action. The first legislative approval is the development agreement. A development agreement is a negotiated agreement between a developer and the city for public and developer benefits. Those are detailed in the development agreement that's attached to the staff report. But some of the high-level benefits for the developer include longer vesting of the project approvals, which means if approved, the approvals would last longer than the typical two-year period granted by the city. And vesting also means that if approved, the project would be allowed to proceed during the period of the development agreement and the vested rights under the current land use regulations of the city, which means the city wouldn't be able to unilaterally impose new general plans, zoning, or other development-related standards on the project. And so there are benefits, of course, to the developer from a development agreement, given they have certainty, and they have a longer period of certainty in the regulations and the timeframe for development. But in return, there are public benefits that must be gained as well. In this case, I mentioned payment of an affordable housing cash contribution, which is in excess of the city's mandatory inclusionary housing below-market rate or BMR requirements, and those various public improvements like the informational sign at the rear of the property, the parking and circulation and landscaping improvements at the community center. And a development agreement requires city council adoption of ordinance. The general plan amendment for the project involves a change in the text of the general plan land use designation to allow vertical and horizontal mixed use. Most general plan amendments that the Planning Commission sees involve a change in the land use designation for a piece of property, but this property would remain in its current designation in the general plan, which is commercial. It would just, if approved, the general plan amendment would allow mixed use to occur in places other than the same building above the ground floor as the commercial use, which is the current situation in the general plan. That change is consistent with a change that the city council has already supported and endorsed in its approval of the local coastal land use plan or LCLUP update, which the city council approved, and the city has sent to the Coastal Commission for certification. And so this would simply be incorporating that same change into the general plan commercial land use designation at this time. And a general plan amendment typically is accomplished by city council adoption of a resolution. The next legislative item is a zoning text amendment. This one would make changes that are essentially the same as the general plan amendment related to mixed uses in the form that they can take. But this one would affect the C2 zoning district only, not the C1 zoning district. And it would add a new conditional use to the C2 zoning district to say mixed uses in vertical or horizontal configurations, just in the same way that I explained the general plan amendment a moment ago. And zoning text amendments require city council adoption of an ordinance. And then lastly, the last legislative approval is a rezoning. And this would change the project site's zoning from the M1 Controlled Manufacturing District, which essentially is an obsolete zoning district. It's not utilized very much anymore. And all development standards in the M1 district already point to a different zoning district, the C3 Service Commercial Zoning District. The C3 district's allowable uses do not include residential uses. And so in order for this mixed-use project to be undertaken, the project site would need to be rezoned to the C2 or C1 zoning district. And in order to be undertaken in the way proposed by the applicant, in conjunction with the zoning text amendment, the project site would need to be rezoned to the C2 zoning district. And similar to zoning text amendments, rezonings also require city council adoption of an ordinance. One item to note, unfortunately, some outdated text made it into the development agreement that was published with the agenda packet. And so I do want to read into the record the revisions to Section 5.1 of the development agreement, and they are shown on the screen. I apologize, but if you'd bear with me, I'll just read these couple paragraphs as quickly as I can to read them into the record, and ask that any planning commission action to recommend approval of the development agreement include revisions to Section 5.1, as shown here. And so this would change Section 5.1 Affordable Housing Obligations to read as follows. Section 5.1.1 Construction of Below Market Rate Units. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for any portion of the project, developer shall enter into an affordable housing agreement in a form approved by the city in its discretion, providing, among other things, for the provision of three units as ownership below-market rate units in accordance with the requirements of the city's inclusionary ordinance, PMC Section 9-4.4700 and SEQUITOR, as to construction and restriction of ownership units, as may be amended, parentheses, the below-market rate units. The below-market rate units shall be provided as follows. One, one flat restricted to low-income households. Two, one townhome restricted to low-income households. And three, one townhome restricted to moderate-income households. In addition, one townhome below-market rate unit shall be provided in each building. Developer may not pay an in-lu fee to meet the requirements in this Section 5.1.1. Section 5.1.2 Affordable Housing Contribution. Developer shall make a payment in the amount of $272,000 and zero cents, subject to annual adjustment based on the San Francisco Bay Area Consumer Price Index beginning one year after the effective date, parentheses, Affordable Housing Contribution, toward the development of affordable housing in the city. The Affordable Housing Contribution shall be paid to the city prior to the issuance of the first building permit for the project. Thank you for enduring that. In order to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, the city prepared an initial study mitigated negative declaration, or ISMND. The ISMND identified all potentially significant environmental impacts that may result from the project and concluded that those could be all mitigated to less than significant levels. During the public comment period, no public or agency comments were submitted on the ISMND. And in order to ensure that all potentially significant environmental impacts are mitigated to less than significant levels, the city has prepared a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP. The MMRP includes what are known as mitigation measures, which include specific performance requirements by the identified party in the MMRP. In this case, those mitigation measures address the resource categories of biological resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and tribal cultural resources. And a condition of approval of the project would require the applicant's compliance with the MMRP if and when the project is approved. Subsequent to publication of the Planning Commission Agenda Packet and prior to tonight's hearing, staff did receive one public comment. The commenter actually directly sent that to all the Commissioners as well. Staff has made that public comment available to the public in the city's offices and also posted that comment on the Planning Commission webpage on the Planning Department website. And so in conclusion, staff's recommended action tonight following the public hearing it would be to adopt the ISMND and MMRP for the project, to approve the development permits as outlined in the staff report, and to recommend city council approval of the legislative items, which included the development agreement, general plan amendment, rezoning, and zoning text amendment. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I will ask at this point whether or not the, any Commissioners have a request for clarification or particular questions before we hear from the applicants and the public. Seeing none, I think I guess, I think then we'll move on to, I hear from the applicants, and our practice is to afford 10 minutes to the applicant to present, and also to let the applicant know that the applicant can reserve a portion of that 10 minutes to respond to any comments that might be raised by the public that the applicant views requiring clarification or a response. So we'll go ahead then and just invite the applicant to join us as a panelist. And Mr. Murdock, I'll let you sort of take it from there.
Thank you, Chair. There are several folks affiliated with the project team, and so I will take a moment to bring them in. And once one of them joins, if they could clarify whether Mark Womack of EID Architects is also on the project team, that would be helpful. And so I've added Brendan Murphy, Eamon Murphy, and Stuart Welty.
Excellent. So I'll let the team decide how they want to present. Mr. Murdock, if you could let the team know when their, I don't know, when they've used seven minutes, just so that they have awareness there.
Thank you, Chair. Looks like we may have lost Stuart. Actually, there you go. So Stuart, you should be able to share your screen if you're so inclined. And as Chair Niblin mentioned, you have 10 minutes overall, but you're allowed to reserve up to three minutes for rebuttal if you'd like. So I'll give you a notification when you're at seven minutes in case you care to stop and reserve the balance of the time.
Okay, thank you, Christian. You can hear me okay right now?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just looking for the button that allows me to share the screen. More here. Share screen, there it is.
And Mr. Welty, could you confirm, is Mark Womack part of your project team?
Yes, Mark is.
Okay, I'll bring him in while you begin your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so you may see from our team Stuart, Mark, Ray, Sean, and then of course Brendan and Eamon are the applicants. And then there's other members of the team who are consultants, and they may or may not be present. That would be the, you know, traffic consultant and landscape architect, et cetera. And we're happy to answer any questions that I may leave out. I wanted to say thank you very much for your time this evening. Planning Commissioners, I know you're extremely busy. We've been anxiously awaiting this evening and working hard with Christian over so many years and Tina and other planners, Public Works, et cetera, to create a project for Pacifica that complements the site and really enhances the ability for new residents to move in and for existing residents to enjoy the city in new and possibly more productive and comfortable ways. Our history is that we develop, we design architecture that is highly sustainable, energy efficient, almost everything we do is LEED certified, NZE, low water use, et cetera. And so we try to
Forgive my interruption. I'm only seeing your email screen presented. You may want to confirm the window that's projecting on your screen. Chair Niblin, can you confirm, are you also seeing email?
That's right, I just see the email on screen right now.
Strange. Okay. Let's see here.
And for the record, I've stopped the timer for a moment while we sort this out.
Okay, sorry about that. Let me turn that off, just so it's not an option. And share the screen. Sure. There, is that, that looks better?
Yeah, I think that's what, I think that's what you intended.
Yes.
A rendering of the
Thank you. Yes, I did intend that. Sorry about that. So that, as I was saying, the idea of the project is to have, you know, type of project that allows the street presence to be welcoming and versatile and to accommodate the active lifestyles of the community, and to allow folks to have the ability to not only enjoy the environment and the natural open space elements of Pacifica, but also the, you know, have a place to live that isn't, that it's comfortable and healthy and highly sustainable, but not ultra expensive. So by that, by way of that, we've tried to find that balance between providing the maximum amount of open space and landscaping and the maximum number of units that can be comfortably afforded by the site and by the residents and by the parking requirements. To that end, as was described in the, in the staff report, our first goal was to establish the concept of breaking the buildings up into three components and having the commercial, of course, focused out along Crespe, and residential units forming more of a neighborhood and transitional interface between the commercial Crespe presence and the large expansive half, basically half the site of open space, which then relates over to the ocean, which is over this direction, and the community center. Additionally, through the development agreement, we are proposing to, you know, this is just to reorient you, which I think you're all very familiar with the area, the exist, some of the existing architecture and the, you know, the variety of commercial and multifamily residential that exists in the area and the community center to the west. We have worked also with the city, as was described by Christian, that within the owners have developed a development agreement with the city attorney and the city to enhance the community center parking lot, provide a much nicer newly landscaped Crespe frontage and pedestrian walkway area and interface between our project and the community center to, you know, make it feel very intertwined. And then by way of that, improving this And then by way of that, improving this area so that the circulation is more smoothly accommodated and has a lot more parking, not a regular sized parking, as well as accessible parking. And so in the traffic and parking analysis, that was taken into consideration as a potential way to enhance the amount of parking that we are proposing on site. And then of course, you know, very strong connection between the open space that's allotted and the community center area, the skate park and the connection over to the ocean, to Pacific Ocean. The, you know, the, working with the, with the various consultants, we've developed this idea that the landscaping would have not only evergreen landscaping that would be natural to the coastal area, but also try to enhance the pollinator plants as much as possible to help rejuvenate the ecosystem while we are managing the stormwater for all the C3, C6 requirements, et cetera, and filtering that and retaining it on site to irrigate the plants, et cetera, but also provide a plant pallet that allows for these ecosystems to be reestablished and rebuilt. The materials that we're proposing are all very high quality materials. They're geared towards longevity and low maintenance while still being attractive. And so our coatings, you know, we don't have bare metal, for instance. We have, you know, aluminized coatings or composite materials so that we won't have a lot of rust nor decay or rot. And so the materials are geared to, with an eye toward maintaining a type of architecture that looks, that feels and looks coastal and has that kind of coastal interesting vibe to it, but also has a quality to it that is a little bit more modern and that a lot of them are engineered products with special coatings or composites to allow them to withstand extremes of the marine environment, et cetera. The fenestration throughout the project is geared toward multiple ability to adjust it for the breezes, the coastal breezes. Of course, everyone knows that the coast is a beautiful area, but it has those intensities of sometimes being extremely warm and sometimes wanting you to bundle up. So we size the fenestration and oriented it in a way that gives you the ability to have natural ventilation from, and cross ventilation to varying degrees. And that then is the beginning, that plus the massing and the enhanced wall assemblies is the beginning of how we cut down on the energy use because of course we can create a very healthy indoor environment and we create some of the healthiest ones according to the certifiers. But without introducing artificial energy, we try to do everything passive with the orientation on site, et cetera.
Mr. Welty, you have three minutes remaining.
Okay, well, thank you. But we do provide for the rooftops to be versatile and accommodate not only views, but also solar panels potentially on the roofs as well. So I'll wrap it there. I think that overall, you've probably perused the project and flipped through the pages. If you have any specific questions, we're happy to answer them. But those were our main tenets of our goals and hopefully we've achieved that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welty. We'll go ahead Ben and hear from the public with respect to this matter. So I'll ask Mr. Murdock to go ahead and help us identify whether we have a comment from the public and help us work through that.
Thank you Chair. There are currently two hands raised, so I will get us set up. Before I do that, I just want to note there are two and a half minutes reserved for the rebuttal for the applicant. And we will start with Cliff Lawrence. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me out? Hello? Yes.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Cliff Lawrence again. For some reason, I wanted to share, for some reason, this file for tonight. I couldn't load it, so I really appreciate you putting those visuals up. Thank you. Another note, just to share with you. I put my hand up extra early this time because it's, I need a little bit of advanced time, as Christian said, to even find the race in portion. I'm not opposed to this plan, but I have some questions. And I don't know if I'll get any answers, but my questions are kind of of this nature. We're selling city property here. I don't know how much square footage. I assume the 272,000 is for whatever amount of land that is. And I don't know if there's special conditions that go with that that are, you know, in addition to the price. Then the other thing I'm concerned about is our development fees. There are development fees really reflective of the true cost to city of infrastructure and such. And whether or not we are at parity with other municipalities in this area. I don't know if we've heard the full rendition of what the deal is with the southern portion of this property that apparently gets into some of those, I would think, SEQA issues, biological or whatever. And then a final note, this isn't a floodplain, I believe. Are there any special considerations or obligations that the city approved? The city makes itself obligated to by approving this. And as always, I thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And Mr. Murdock, are there other speakers?
Yes, Chair. Next is Margaret Goodell. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioner. I am here to talk about wetlands.
Ms. Goodell, you are very hard for me to hear. I don't know if my colleagues can hear you or not. You might want to speak up just a little bit more loud.
Let's try it again. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
All right, can we start over please then?
Yes, we'll start over.
Thank you. This project requires 10 special considerations. Exceptions, amendments, rezonings. I'm amazed at the way we're going about this. And to top it all off, we have a supreme irony that the city itself drew down the groundwater in order to build the sewage, extra sewage containment tank. And that caused the retreat of the marsh. And now after two years of drought, the marsh is seen as not being where it once was. Lots of pictures are there. Marshes are precious and special. About 90% of Bay Area marshes and wetlands are gone already. To decide that 7.77 acres of this marsh can be disturbed and possibly filled is just a travesty, perhaps not to everyone, but certainly for the tiny birds, the songbirds, the song sparrows, the spotted tohes, the red tits, the yellowthroats, the warblers, and the pair of mallards that generally have used this marsh as a home. To say that there's no significant impact, this is a significant impact for the creatures that use that marsh and have used it. When it was a huge marsh, when it was a remnant of, or now it is just a remnant of Lake Matilda, that at one point we had a big, big, big lake there. I see in your introductory photo pelicans flying over the land where they never, ever, ever would be. But I know from personal experience, all those little birds that have been out there and depend on that marsh. I ask you to maybe think about not building quite so much. Leave some more of the marsh to reestablish itself. And if you need a visual, think in terms of your favorite football field. Think in terms of eliminating 75% of that. For those little birds and little creatures, 75% of any part of it is painful. So I ask you, please do not allow the destruction of even an inch of this very much imperiled habitat. Do not accept a mitigated negative declaration. Preserve what we can for the sake of all of us, including the other creatures out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Mr. Murdock, are there other comments?
Yes, Chair. Next is Christine Bowles. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I was really surprised when looking at these plans to see that the project was relying on parking spaces at the city's community center to meet the required parking. And even then, they're still asking for a parking exception. I asked if a previous study session had occurred to see if the Planning Commission or council were in favor of this agreement. And I was given meetings from a November 2016 study session that you were actually at, Chair Nibblin. But that was for a much smaller project with only nine units and no mention of parking exceptions. The commissioners at the time were mostly concerned about the proportion of commercial space versus residential because this is one of the few commercial vacant properties left in the city. They thought then that the 15% commercial proposed square footage versus 85 residential was not enough. I looked at the calculations today and now apparently we're down to 7.8% commercial. At a recent city council meeting to discuss the city's budget and looming deficit, the council members and city manager Woodhouse acknowledged that residential projects were a net drain on the city's resources. So I would really be surprised if they would be in favor of this project that gives up prime commercial opportunities that would provide more tax income for the city at this crucial time. I've not seen any discussion of using the city's property at the community center to provide 17 of the parking spaces. Sorry, I jumped in my notes twice here. I'm also confused as to why the city would consider giving up land in front of the community center to create this parking and the access path for this development on city property when, again, this is like the only community center in the whole town. We're going to be increasing our density by 1,890 units soon under Rena and we might actually need to expand our community center too. So I think this is really a short term, well, ill-conceived project. And I really have a hard time believing that the city council would be behind it. I also want to point out that the draft general plan is actually in favor for this project owner. It changes the density of the lot to mixed-use center up to five stories with opportunities for much more affordable housing. I think the project could easily be redesigned to consolidate the units, provide enough parking with a greater height, and also provide a greater buffer to the wetland. That wetland is not just for the birds, as Margaret so eloquently said. It's also flood control. This is an area in a FEMA flood zone. We know the equalization basin is not working. We've had floods there twice just this year. Thank you.
And just when, this is Bob Bowles. I'm going to be coming on and raising my hand also from the same computer.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. We'll ask you to go ahead and raise your hand and we'll take your comment.
All right. Next speaker is Cindy Abbott. Please go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I won't restate everything that's been said already about the wetlands, but I really think that much more consideration needs to be given to that back half of the property. It's significant area and it really seems like it's just being shoehorned in there. I went by the other day and even without much train, it's full. It's all the way up to the berm that was constructed for the equalization basin. And I too am wondering about how that's going to be able to flex when there actually is rain again, as well as concerns of protections for the species that live there and have been there long before any of us have been in this area. I'm concerned overall with the size of the project. It went from nine residential units to 19. And I have, I'm surprised that we haven't heard in any of this conversation about the traffic flow and parking. I hope that the commissioners are going to ask a lot of questions about that. Ingress and egress out of that area of the community center is already very tricky. With how quickly people drive and come off of Highway 1, that's already a difficult area today. So, and it sounds like we're just going to be adding more to that already troubled area where pedestrian accidents and other things have occurred over the years. So please ask questions about that and really, let's hear about that traffic study that we said we're done other than that it's going to have aluminum siding and look pretty. I'm also concerned about the parking and how that spills over into the community center. Again, already something that's an impacted area today. So I hope that the size of this project is going to be considered as well as, wouldn't it have made a lot more sense if there was, it was actually an affordable housing project, particularly for seniors? I know they're already across the street, but we have so little room for seniors in our community. And I don't think that this project is geared towards them. Maybe somebody can share if it is, but I would really think that we should be focusing more on housing for people who are not able to afford what things are going for these days. So there's my list. Traffic, parking, the size of the project, the affordability of the units, and protection of the wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
Next we have Gail Benton Schumaker. Please go ahead.
Hi. My name is Gail Benton Schumaker and I'm speaking as a member of Tree City Pacifica. I'd like to talk about the three heritage trees on the property. The Arborist report for this agenda item states that since all three trees will be removed, there should be a tree replacement plan to accommodate the loss of canopy on this site. Since the city doesn't currently have a formula for estimating canopy and replacement of canopy, I would like to request that the Planning Commission mitigate by requesting a three to one ratio on each of these heritage trees as you have done in the past. So if this project is accepted, then please continue to have a three to one ratio for replacing the heritage trees on this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benton Schumaker. Next comment, please.
Next is Bob Bowles. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Bob Bowles. I'm an architect who lives in the Manor District. I want to congratulate the project developer for building high-density housing on this site. I think it's a good place to do it in general, although I share some of the concerns of the other people who have spoken. I just have a very small detailed question, I guess, for staff as much as anything. The city is currently proposing to raise the sewer rates. They're studying that now. It'll be voted on by the city council. I read the staff report on that project and I noted that the capacity charges, which is what the city charges developers to connect to the sewer system, are currently very low and they are proposing to raise them by about three times. So from something like 3,800 to something like $12,000 per unit. Christian mentioned that the Development Agreement sort of locks the developer into current rules, I suppose. So my question is, is it going to lock them into that lower sewerage connection rate? Or will the city be able to charge a real rate, which is more reflective of the real costs of the city's sewer system? Just hoping that it can. I wonder if the staff could comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Next comment, please.
There are no other hands raised, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I believe that the project applicant reserved, was it two and a half minutes, Mr. Murdock, that you said?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and ask the applicant if the applicant wishes to address any matters that were raised in the course of public comment with the two and a half minutes of the name. Mr. Welty, again, we'll ask if you want to use any more of the time that you have to address any other matters.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I was trying to share my screen, but it said I wasn't allowed to yet. So I was trying to do that. But, so, yeah, so the...
Mr. Murdock, did you want to allow Mr. Welty to share?
Chair, the ability to share is enabled. I'm not sure what issue Mr. Welty might be having.
Let's see. It does say that it's allowing it now. There we go. So the, so thank you for your comments. Thank you for attending, various members of the community. And the, so when we began the project, we did look at the, you know, existing uses in the area of how the land is being used. And we, you know, made a large commitment to, to show that we're serious about providing a large portion of the site to retain, to remain, you know, open and unencumbered. And you can see that half the site is that way. In, in general, in the area, you know, the, the, there's an open area here on the community center site, and then there's what will be a complementary and balanced portion on our site. You can see how they would be proportional and create that, you know, allow the open-space area and wetland accommodation to remain in this area, essentially where it operates now. Through the Sequo analysis, that was heavily researched and analyzed by the city's third-party Sequo analyst, who has, you know, several different types of experts on their panel. And they did lots of testing to determine, you know, exactly where the land would be considered wetland, et cetera. And we had identified this area as, you know, this demarcation line that we're using as the point at which the habitat for the soil and the types of plants, et cetera, are conducive to wetland areas. So this site plan here tries to show that. There's this line right through here, and then it's demarcated by this grove of royal willows and, you know, or, you know, area of a royal willows, field of them. And so we are actually proposing to enlarge that area and bring it, bring a royal willows all down along the side of our property and along the rear perimeter on the other side as well, so that the royal willows will surround this property in a way that the landscape architect and the Sequo analyst, plant biologists, et cetera, said that would be the best use, you know, ability for the willows to grow well and offer an extended amount of habitat. So in reality, we, you know, we have tried very hard to find the right balance. Everyone, you know, this housing is needed, and a significant portion of this project, three units, two townhouse units and one flat, are offered as affordable housing units and through the BMR program, through the BMR ordinance, as well as the fairly significant, almost $300,000 of extra payment through that program. So finding that balance between providing some affordably sized housing and, you know, accommodating a restored and actually well-operating open space area is, we feel like we spent a lot of work and with a lot of qualified consultants to determine, to achieve that. And we feel, and we...
Mr. Welty?
...that it will work very well.
Yeah, we thank you. We're through the two and a half minutes. If there are other questions?
All right. If you, if you don't mind, I'll just throw out one more comment regarding the tree mitigation. The landscape plan does show an additional 17 trees and then 60 some other plants. And so of the three trees that we are proposing to remove, the Arborist has confirmed that one of them is dead, and the other two are diseased. So we'll be replacing those with, you know, more than three times the mitigation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all that. Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll go ahead then and bring the matter back to commission so that my colleagues and I have the opportunity to ask any questions we have and deliberate. And so we'll begin that process now. Comments, questions, certifications? Commissioner Don Marat.
I share a lot of the concerns of what we heard from the community. We do need developed housing. It's quite important. Those of you who understand the geology and the wetlands will also understand that that whole area has been significantly degraded over the last 70, 80 years. It would be nice to be able to see the area of the half of property to maybe, instead of a 3:1 mitigation on trees, to maybe work together with the state and the city to enhance the seasonal wetlands, to make it more productive, since, since we are limited in space anymore from what the old Laguna Salada, you know, kind of used to be. So that's like a consideration to that, that maybe instead of looking at a lot of heritage trees, we look at trying to enhance what we have left in terms of, of the seasonal wetlands that would be in that area. So that's, that's kind of a consideration. Parking, there was a lot of, there's got to be more discussion on parking, and I'm hoping some of the other Commissioners will raise that. So, so I, I, I'm still kind of trying to, to look at how that parking is going to work. I'm a very big proponent of, as much as possible, renewables. And I didn't see any potential, and maybe there's no requirement for potential for any kind of solar type of enhancements for this project. I'm not sure what's in the garages of all of these condo units, but an enhancement would be to be able to provide maybe 220 outlets near the door, so people who do have electrical vehicles would have that opportunity to be able to hook up to, to that. So these are just considerations to help it maybe make it a little bit more attractive. The other question I had was, when we go from M1 to C2, and maybe this is a question for staff and for Mr. Murdock, does the C2 designation allow the city to kind of control what type of commercial uses are available there? I guess if I were living on top of the commercial use, I wouldn't want to be living on top of a nightclub kind of thing that, you know, so, so I'm not sure. That's kind of ignorance on my part, what would be allowable. You certainly wouldn't want to have a young family living on top of a gun shop, those kinds of things. So, so maybe you can just clarify what, what that C2 designation allows or doesn't, doesn't allow. So I'll stop at that point and maybe have more questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Don Marat. Maybe we'll take a second and ask staff if they could respond to this specific question.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Don Marat, for your thoughtful comments. As it relates to the zoning, with the proposed rezoning to the C2 zoning district, there are allowable uses that are set forth in the municipal code already, and they come in the form of what are known as permitted uses and conditional uses. Permitted uses are land uses that the city council has already determined are acceptable for the particular zoning district. They include, you know, conventional retail, personal and business service establishments, including financial institutions, offices, and a variety of others, certain types of restaurants, vet hospitals and clinics, and so on. There are certain conditional uses that require planning commission approval of a use permit prior to those being allowed in a C2-zoned area. Examples of conditional uses in the C2 include social halls, clubs, theaters, and nightclubs, specifically to your, your concern, and a variety of others, like vehicle and boat sales, pet care and service establishments, boarding and grooming, auto service, car washes, and so on. And so the city council has determined where to draw that line in terms of these land uses, but that line is drawn, and it is in the C2 zoning standards. As it relates to some of your energy efficiency comments, I'm looking for the comment now. I believe I recall seeing a building official comment that these buildings will need to have the solar panels actually installed and not be simply solar-ready. But perhaps the architect can speak further. That's really a bit beyond my area of expertise. And it's also my understanding that the garages, for instance, to your specific example, would need to be EV charger-ready. And so that wiring would be there, you know, whether the charger would be installed would ultimately be up to the, the unit owner. And forgive me, and not to mention as well the city zoning standards for the commercial component, to have certain electric vehicle charging requirements as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I don't know if the applicant had anything else he wanted to say with respect to those specific concerns raised by Commissioner Don Marat.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Welty.
Okay, so yes, there is, there is a roof plan. If you want me to share the screen, I could show you the roof plan. But roof plans do show proposed solar arrays, and so there's a minimum of, I think, six and a maximum of, so I think, 15 panels per roof area, depending on which roof you're looking at. So yes, there's a considerable number of solar panels being proposed for the project. And the garages are equipped, would be equipped with at least one charger per garage. The panels, the house panels, with also the meters, would also be sized to accommodate battery charge, battery storage. If the owner, you know, chose to install battery storage, the meter will be sized and designed ahead of time to accommodate that.
Thank you, Mr. Welty.
You bet.
We'll go ahead then and hear from Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I also, too, with the price of oil going up today, I think that electric cars are going to be quite popular in the near future. But I have two other questions. I thought I heard, when I heard the public comments, that the 272K contribution for, toward the low-income housing fund was in addition to the city land cost. Is that true? Or is that the total, total amount paid for the city land? I was wondering if Christian could answer that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Godwin. I don't want to delve too deeply into the purchase and sale agreement, as it's really not subject to the planning commission's review. But I will say there is a separate price that the city has negotiated for purchase of the land. And so the amount that is shown, the $272,000 in the development agreement, is separate from the purchase price for the city-owned land and is an additional amount of money on top of the three below-market-rate units that the city's ordinance requires, and that would be constructed with this project. And so they are not the same amount of money, and the city is not selling its, its portion of its land for $272,000. That's a separate amount payable for affordable housing purposes.
Yeah, I thought that was important to clarify. And another related question is, do you know what the sewer connection median unit cost is? There was discussion that possibly that was inadequate. If, as we decide to let the, let the developer use the current regulations versus a future regulation, could you also comment on, on that amount? And is, would that be included?
Of course. So I don't have the current or proposed rates in front of me, but what I will say is the development agreement in Section 4.1 does address development impact fees. That's on packet page 176. Generally speaking, the question of fees and the relationship to development agreements is very factual-specific and legal-specific and timing-specific. But in general, pursuant to the terms of this particular proposed development agreement, impact fees that are in place as of the effective date can be imposed on the project at the rate in effect at the time of building permit issuance. And so if the public commenter is talking about an existing sewer connection fee, which is a fee the city already has, then the city would be able to impose a sewer connection fee, and the rate of that fee would be the rate that's in effect at the time of building permit issuance. And so it depends ultimately on the timing and whether the city council updates the sewer impact or connection fees that the commenter was interested in. But the potential exists for the city to impose the increased fee.
Thank you. I thought that was important to mention.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. And Commissioner Godwin, Ms. Sharma, did you have anything else to say about that?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Murdock's interpretation of the development agreement language is correct, that the city would be able to impose any additions in this sewer connection fee, should they be increased by the time that the applicant pulls building permits.
Thank you for confirming that. Commissioner Godwin, any other?
No, that's what I was interested in at this point.
Thank you. I'll go to Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. I have quite a few questions, but I think I'm going to hold some of them until all the Commissioners have spoken. My initial question is mainly for staff, and it's kind of an overarching question regarding the parking improvements that will be at the front of the community center. There isn't a lot of detail about those improvements in this package. And I'm trying to understand, given that those parking improvements kind of are there, the new development that we are considering really depend on those parking improvements. So I, I kind of wanted to understand, how much of those improvements should we be reviewing and considering? Because in my opinion, it's pretty important for what we're considering tonight. And then also, legally, the, the community center property, the parking count's going to change. What, because I know we're not considering changes to the community center functioning itself, how much of that do we need to be considering tonight as well?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Berman. Great questions, and I think it warrants some discussion as to the proposed parking and circulation improvements. To start, I want to indicate and clarify that, as staff analyzed the proposed development project, we did not include any of the parking spaces proposed to be constructed on the community center property. And so if you look at the summary and the table at the beginning of the staff report and the analysis of the parking exception, we have not included those spaces and have identified that the project would be short five off-street parking spaces from its relevant number of required parking spaces. There are some additional nuances in terms of covered parking and so forth that make it not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison. But in simple terms, the project would be short five spaces. It is short of municipal code requirements, but the commission may recall other mixed-use projects it's approved in the past. And quite often, the parking exceptions requested for those projects are considerably higher. And so this developer has made an earnest effort to include, you know, as much on-site parking as they, I think, feel like they reasonably could. With that clarified, I do want to next address the community center improvements. And so those off-street parking spaces that are proposed to be constructed pursuant to the development agreement, the city, just like all sorts of public parking spaces, isn't generally strict in terms of who uses them or doesn't overly regulate them. They will be parking spaces attributable to the community center property, and by their construction would increase the number of off-street parking spaces for the community center. As with a variety of parking challenges on properties throughout the city and elsewhere, you know, sometimes people park on someone else's property and utilize that in a way that's not intended. I don't know that there's a good mechanism in place to prevent that, particularly given the proximity and the linkage through the driveway. It's possible there could be spill-over parking, and it could happen, you know, in both directions. I think we shouldn't assume only that the project may impact the community center. The community center and special events held there could cause spill-over into the private property. And so I think it's something to be mindful of. It's just a reality. As for the driveway proposed at the front of the community center, that's intended as a public benefit to improve the circulation and operation of the community center for the city and the public's benefit overall. It's not intended to be an access driveway. That said, people could use it, but it wouldn't be the most convenient way to enter the site. The site has its own dedicated entry driveway at the east end of the site, closest to 580 Crespe. It's a one... It's a one way entry drive and then project traffic would exit through the driveway on the eastern boundary of the community center. And that use by the developer would be subject to a lease with the city and an annual payment with an escalation factor. And so the city would be compensated for the lease of its property. One commenter indicated it's unusual. It is uncommon, but it's not unprecedented. And in many cases, shared driveways have a lot of benefits in terms of preserving on street parking, minimizing the number of places where vehicles are entering and exiting from the roadway and potentially minimizing the number of driveways that pedestrians have to navigate safely. And so we think in this case, overall, it does integrate well and makes sense for this project. And the city would be compensated for the project's use of that space.
Okay, thanks. Great explanation. I am just trying to catch up and back to the parking. Am I understanding correctly that effectively the parking on the new development site is going to be co-mingling with the parking demand on the community center site? So the idea is there's going to be overflow parking in the community center and, you know, everyone's just going to park wherever they park?
What I will say is I think I'm just recognizing the reality that, you know, someone coming in to pick up, you know, an item from one of the commercial uses, for example, might find it more convenient to park in one of the community center spaces, an existing space or one of the proposed spaces. We have not formally analyzed that arrangement and none of the community center spaces that are proposed or existing have been counted towards the project's off street parking requirements. And we've taken it on its face that the project has not provided all of the off street parking. And it proposed approval of a parking exception to account for that. Not just the number of spaces, but covered parking is another example of the parking exception. And so I think there's the the reality as well as the permitting that has been outlined in the staff report.
So what's outlined in the staff report doesn't tally up the new parking stalls that would be in front of the community center, correct?
That's correct. And if that were to be done, the project would be over parked.
Over parked.
Not done that analysis and nor do we, I think, want to so designate those spaces as belonging to the development because that hasn't been negotiated and the city hasn't included a mechanism to be compensated for that ongoing use and maintenance in the development agreement.
Okay. I might have go back questions, but I guess moving on a little bit to give other people a chance to speak.
Vice Chair Berman, may I just clarify another point as well? I just want to clarify that there's nothing in the development agreement, to my knowledge, that would prevent the city from managing those proposed spaces to be constructed in the manner that it manages the other spaces that the city owns on the community center property. And so ultimately, should the city want to become more or less restrictive in its use, that would be the city's prerogative for those spaces.
Okay. Is there any intent to potentially include more definition regarding the parking between the two properties, like a covenant agreement that kind of focuses on this?
Well, I think the nature of such an agreement would depend on the nature of what you're describing, Vice Chair Berman. If it, for example, was to seek exclusion of development traffic, perhaps that's something that could be negotiated. Certainly enforcement of parking is always an ongoing challenge and it would have costs, you know, associated with enforcement and oversight of that. But that's not currently something that's part of the agreement, to my knowledge.
Okay. I mean, the only concern is if the the property, the development we're considering right now, granted, I understand that we're looking at a parking exception and that we're not considering the extra spots that will be built in front of the community center. But if ultimately we know that this development is probably going to overflow in that community center. But then if in the future, those parking stalls are not available to this development, where do we go from there? But I'll, I do have other questions, but I see the hands going up, so I'll let someone else speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. We'll we'll come back. Commissioner Ferguson.
All right, kind of a lot to unpack here. A couple of comments and one question for staff. I guess it feels a little bit like we're coming into this at a late stage in a lengthy and larger negotiation with the city. Some of the stuff here it feels is out of the purview of the commission, but is very important parcel to this whole approval. For example, the sale of the land, the improvements to the community center frontage, and then the lease agreement for the driveway additionally. I don't see as any of those as being part of this commission's purview, but they seem to be very central to this whole negotiation here. So I'm not sure how we weighed around them. As far as the parking has been addressed, it's a, for me, it's a trade off, right? This you can either have parking or you can have the preserved wetland that everyone's talking about. It doesn't seem like you can have both. And my question, I guess this would be for staff. Is there a parking study available for the existing community center parking? Having been there a few times, I've never noticed this to be an extremely impacted lot. But I understand that it's not, it's not to be considered as part of the parking for this development, but it it seems that the way that this has all been written, that it they're they're effectively going to become one parking lot connected in the middle. So my question would be if they just was anything to show if that's a currently impacted parking lot that's always overflowing. And in fact, you're going to have extra parking coming into this development from the community center or vice versa is possible. And I have one more question before I give it to staff. There was a note on the rezoning for the commercial use to allow residential units to be located in locations other than the same building, which is a revision to the general plan, I believe. A question is if that is a one off that applies only to this one development or if it's a precedent that now applies to any any unit under that zoning throughout the future developments.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, for the questions. I'll do my best to to loop back to them, but if I miss something, please let me know. As far as the negotiations, you're correct that this process has been the subject of negotiations for several years between the city and the developer. Those negotiations, given that they involve the city real property interest, were subject to the delegated negotiation authority by the city council to staff and confirmation of the terms and a tentative agreement with the city council. And so the city council has been involved and has made you know, certain steps towards this agreement. Certainly, it's not final. But the city has, city council has supported the various aspects that are contained in the proposed development agreement, for example. As it relates to the community center, I'm not aware of a parking study. But your experience matches mine. That's very rarely is the community center parking lot full, at least on the inland side. As to whether parking will spill over one way or the other, I think that's speculative. Think the possibility exists that users of both properties may attempt to utilize parking spaces on the other. But as the developer, as the parking exception is drafted, again, it takes that head on and indicates this property, you know, is facing practical difficulties and hardship with providing all of the parking. Certainly avoiding encroachment on the southern half of the site was a project objective. Lots of parking could be provided there, but at a cost certainly to the environment and and the project design. And so that's not currently proposed. And ultimately, it's up to the commission to to determine whether or not they feel a practical hardship and difficulty exists such that the project has provided the parking to the extent that it reasonably can. And I feel like there's another another question in there for you that is escaping me right now.
Yeah, the last question was on the zoning, whether it's a one off that applies only to this case or oppressive.
Right, thank you. So as proposed, this zoning tax amendment to the C two zoning district would apply to all C two zoned properties in the city. As indicated in the staff report, there are relatively few. The vast proportion of the city's commercial zone areas are zone C one. But it would apply to C two zoned areas and area zone professional office, which follow the C two allowable uses. But it's important to note that if approved, this would create a conditional use, which means no project in the city would be able to just undertake this type of this new form of zone of mixed use development. And it would require approval of the use permit, just as is recommended to be approved tonight for this project. So it wouldn't create any new development that would not come back for a public hearing, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that answers even more than I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Leo.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions right now. My first question is, I guess, more of a clarification around the the seventeen parking places. So from my account on the map, it appears that there will be about ten in the, I guess, northern end of the community center. And then an additional seven on the east end adjacent to the to the development. But those seventeen, especially the ones on the east end, those all remain on city owned land after after the development agreement goes into place as well?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then my additional question is one thing I'm I'm sensitive of here of in this area as well as just generally in in commercial areas is kind of, this is a highly high pedestrian area. I'm thinking of a Saturday in October where we have nice weather and it's going to be busy here. People walk into the beach. And so one thing I'm sensitive of is around net new curb cuts. Now, from what I can see here is we don't have any net new curb cuts along Crespi. The western end of the community center driveway would be leveraging the existing parking curb cut there. The, I guess I would call it the eastern end of the community center and the exit pathway of this development would be leveraging the existing curb cut and driveway to the back of the community center parking. And then lastly, roughly in the same location, probably won't be the same exact location, but on the most eastern most, the entry for the development would be leveraged in the existing curb cut or the basically what is essentially an existing curb cut in a vicinity from the prior development that was on this property before it was demolished in 2016. Is that right? We would remain with essentially three curb cuts along this pathway?
Yes, Commissioner Leo, I think you're generally correct that the net number of curb cuts would remain the same. It's hard to say exactly where, but my impression is that the the new entry driveway to this project would actually relocate the existing curb cut from the prior 570 Crespi single family residence eastward. And it may actually narrow that as compared to its current configuration. And so it may be actually a net positive in terms of on street parking, but it certainly wouldn't introduce new curb cuts that would reduce the availability of on street parking, which is highly utilized in this area in my experience.
Right. Okay, thank you. Great. And then the last thing for now is just, I wanted to clarify the undeveloped area in the back, that is going to be what I'm going to just call fenced off, where even even though it's going to be private land, the tenants or slash owners of the property won't be able to use that for their pleasure. It's basically going to be cordoned off on the property for very little use, if any, is what I'm kind of reading here. Is that is that correct? I don't know if that's to staff or to the developer, but just want to clarify that.
Right. There's no proposed active use as part of this project, Commissioner Leo. As to whether it will be physically fenced off, not to my knowledge, but perhaps the the developer can can speak to that intention. I think access may be practically difficult, given the the density of some of the tree cover that's proposed to be planted back there. I think the applicant may need to clarify further.
Is the applicant available?
Yes, this is Stuart, the architect. So there is a sheet in our set that shows the proposed fencing back there. And there is a little walkway and a short fence. It's basically stainless steel cables and iron bars. So it's, you know, it's attractive fence that is designed to alert people to the idea that you there shouldn't be folks entering that area. But it's not, for instance, something that looks like a security fence. It's meant to be attractive and sort of create an overlook. There'll also be, as was mentioned once before, some signage to describe what's going on around here in terms of the plantings and the types of habitat that are being preserved in that open space area. And so it's a bit of a, it's a bit of an overlook kind of an area as well. If you'd like, I can find that sheet number and let you know what sheet number that is.
Yeah, if you can provide the packet page, it's it's a large packet, so.
Yeah, even for us, it's hard to remember sometimes which sheet has the pertinent information. There are a lot of sheets. In fact, there is a landscape sheet that shows all the landscaping proposed in front of the community center, in case anyone's interested in that as well. So here I found it. So it is sheet A 1.14. And if you want, I could like, if you want to share my screen, but it's a it's a cantilevered boardwalk walkway with a forty two inch basically steel bar and cable railing with a little wood top.
A 1.14. Okay, I see your page number is A 5.6.
Page 109, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Oh, I see. Yeah. In the packet.
Okay, thanks. I'll take a look at this. Thanks. That was my last question for now.
You bet.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Godwin, did you have an additional question?
I did. On an earlier project, we specified parking stackers to increase the parking capacity without, when there were an inadequate number of parking spaces. Was that considered for this project? And if not, why not? I guess that's directed to.
Yeah, this is Stuart. Thanks for the question. Yeah, we did consider parking stackers. Parking stackers do have a bit of a limit in terms of height and typically the height is twelve feet. So in a project that is also trying to achieve a lower level of massing and as you can see from our street facade, et cetera, we're trying to make sure that not any, that no part of the development looks too monolithic, that it has that kind of variegated massing. So the height that a car stacker typically requires is just not available here. Now, if someone wanted to try to employ exterior parking stacker, you know, that could be explored, but we just don't, you know, it's not typically something that's done because of the mechanisms. And of course, in the marine environment, we would wonder how that would hold up. So I hope that helps. We did, we did consider that. But also, you know, reduced size parking, etc. But we didn't we didn't go there on any of that. Everything's standard size and or larger. Oh, by the way, I know you mentioned once before your interest in alternative fuel stations. And we have also onsite some electric charging stations for the visitors, guests, commercial use, et cetera.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Let's go back to Commissioner Berman.
Thanks, Chair. Before I go back for seconds, do you have any questions that you wanted to ask Chair Niblin?
No, thank you. I think the matters are being very, very well covered. So I'm listening with great interest. Thank you.
Okay, great. My next couple of questions are probably for staff also. They're regarding public utility easements, the POEs. I noticed that there's a PUE at the front of the site, and I'm wondering if the city or Public Works typically allows deck overhangs to encroach in the PUE?
Senior Engineer Dingitis, would you like to speak about public utilities easements?
Yes, good evening. I don't believe we 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 should, we would allow the overhang. It depends on what kind of PUE it is and if it would be accessible if we need to get in there.
I'm trying to find the packet page where I saw it. I think it was one of the architectural sheets.
One place that the PUE shows up is on the TM zero, the civil engineering drawings that are in the set. And
Yeah, I see them in the front.
Yeah, and the project isn't proposing to overhang any PUE.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if the it's the deck was shown on the civil on the tentative map. I can't find it right now. But so it sounds like there's confirmation from the applicant that that no part of the building will overhang or encroach in the PUE. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Another question about PUEs for staff. The, I noticed there's a proposed overflow pipe at the south of the site that connects from the wetlands to, I believe, a twenty-four inch storm drain that is not on the subject property. It looks to be on the properties of the single-family homes. However, I didn't see an existing PUE for those for that storm drain line. I'm assuming there is, and it's just not shown because it's on a separate parcel. I'm looking for confirmation first that there's a PUE for that storm drain line.
Yes, the city does have a PUE running through there. We do, the city has a storm drain easement along those properties that goes all the way towards Highway one.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess with that, so part of the improvements to install that, it's a twelve-inch pipe connection. That will have to be improvements on the single-family home. Is, has there been any discussions with that property owner? Maybe that's a question for the applicant. So I'm looking at, it's packet page one forty-nine. And it's tentative map page three or TM dash three. And there's a twelve-inch HDPE storm drain line that serves as an overflow from the wetlands or wetland. And it connects to the storm drain line, which is actually in a single-family home property.
I think that's something maybe Mr. Ralteau will need to speak to if he's able.
Yeah, unfortunately, the civil engineer isn't present this evening. And so I can't speak in great detail to that. I, although I would find it unusual that the civil engineer would propose something on, yeah, an improvement on someone else's property. If you're saying that it happens to coincide with an outlet from an existing site, then I would venture to say that the outlet from the existing site may not be legal. So I would, I'm not sure. And I don't know more than that. But it's unusual for you know, one site to drain onto another. I don't think that's, that certainly wouldn't be our intention, because, I mean, everything we ever do, the C three, C six requirements don't even, don't allow everything we do. You retain water on-site. And then at certain intervals, you let it meter out at a very slow rate. So, and you know, through proper channels. So the short answer, I don't think that's occurring, but we can double check with the civil engineer.
I guess then that also leads me to another question. Is this overflow that's shown connecting to the storm drain line? Is this required by the MND? Effectively, I mean, my look at the grading of the site is the existing wetlands overland release is likely towards Crespe. And now there's going to be a large development between the wetland and Crespe. So in a hundred-plus tier storm, if if the capacity of this wetland that is now being like condensed a little bit, if there's a need for an overflow somewhere, does it, where does it need to go? So is it going to connect to the storm drain line, which my take of it needs to be built in someone else's property? Or is it going to overflow into the community center property, which I agree typically we can't just let a property surface drain to another property without some form of easement or negotiation associated with it? So I'm just kind of trying to piece it all together.
There is a, the TM three sheet that you were mentioning does show some indications of of tie-ins. None of them are shown on someone else's property that I can see. Then there are notes that say, you know, per city regulations. If I get back to the sheet, I'll read the exact terminology, but there are notes to that effect. Let's see, do you connect to existing twenty-four inch storm drain per city requirements? Per city equalization project plans, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's things that are, the only reason that he would be showing this is to show that we're tying in. I think what he's showing here is that we're tying in on our site. But then that pipe by city regulations needs to connect into the city system. And the city system currently has the pipe in the vicinity of where he's showing it. And so it's just a matter of where the existing city utilities are and the fact that it's required to tie into them. And so the graphics of that, you know, start to, I think, are what you're seeing that are starting to look like you're thinking there's work being done on someone else's property. But that is simply something that would be worked out with city engineering, city public works, as to the tie-in to the existing city tools.
Commissioner Berman, if I may, I think the large part of your concern is, is there a city easement for storm drainage? And is there an existing pipe? And does the city have the ability to allow a connection from the project to that location? I think a second part of your concern, as I'm hearing it, is does there need to be some condition of approval, for instance, that requires some minimum amount of notification and coordination with the property owner? It does appear to me that the easement is located on one of the single-family residential properties. However, that property is burdened with that easement and needs to fulfill its obligation to allow city storm drainage in that location. And so I'm not fully understanding what the concern is with that that functional connection. But certainly, I understand there's potential concern that this homeowner may be inconvenienced and need an appropriate amount of coordination should that improvement be made, even if it's, you know, consistent with the burden on the property that they they purchased already.
Yes, exactly that. The the coordination with the property owner. Understand and fully agree that the property is already burdened with this easement. But they can't be surprised by seeing construction in their backyard. So I could take note, but I'd like to propose a condition of approval that I don't know, Mr. Murdock, if you might help me word a little bit later. But that is to the effect of the the developer needs to to coordinate with that property owner.
Of course, Commissioner Berman. Thank you.
Sorry, I do have a couple more questions. Similar to Commissioner Leo's concerns about, you know, the amount of community members that walk up and down this sidewalk. I'm one of them regularly. There, the freestanding sign that's at the east of the driveway. I think it's on packet page one oh five, it's shown. I I wanted to make sure that that sign is located somewhere outside of the the kind of the site triangle between a car exiting the driveway and a pedestrian walking across the sidewalk. So that site distance, the stopping site distance for a vehicle that's going to go, you know, probably inch over the sidewalk, trying to get onto Crespe, making sure that a pedestrian walking by isn't in a blind spot behind that sign.
Yes, the point's understood by Chair Berman. I'm hunting to see whether that specific issue has already been evaluated. It's quite common for the traffic impact analyses for projects such as this to include a relevant site distance triangle. It probably will take several minutes for me to try to find that information. Or at minimum, the commission could consider a condition of approval to simply reinforce and ensure that 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 review and precise placement occurs if the project is approved.
Okay, great.
Christian, just want to know that 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 that's an entrance and not an exit, so there probably would not be any side distance on on this, on that the eastern driveway.
Is it? Okay, it's just an entrance? It's not both?
Correct. It's a it's a one-way entrance from Crespe Drive. I think the potential exists, you know, for someone to go the wrong way. In reality, right? People do make those kinds of mistakes. And so it may not be for not to do that level of review as a precaution, but it's not immediately necessary, given the design function of that driveway.
Okay. No, that alleviates my concern. If if the driveway is intended to be an in-only. Thank you. And then lastly, a question about the usable open space. I'm wondering, I know that this has been a topic that's been required on multiple developments that this commission has reviewed. And I'm sure we've reviewed the definition of usable open space, but I'm hoping staff can help explain it one more time. A lot of the landscaping for this development is nice landscaping, but it's behind a curve. It's it's somewhere that the community isn't going to go hang out in the middle of the shrubs in a parking island. So I do appreciate that the deck space is open space and it's usable open space, so that's great. But I'm wondering what landscaping is truly usable?
Well, Vice Chair Berman, I think it is important to start with the definition, as you indicated. Usable open space is defined in section nine dash four point two six zero point two of the municipal code. It says, it shall mean common or private outdoor living, recreation, domestic use or landscaping. Such area may be on the ground or on a roof, porch, deck, court or balcony. Off-street parking areas or driveway and or exit corridors shall not be included as usable open space. Any separate area to qualify under this definition shall be a minimum of four feet by ten feet. Usable open space shall not have a slope of more than ten percent.
Okay. So it doesn't necessarily preclude the the landscaping that's behind the curb, but also the fact that there is a certain minimum slope implies to me that the best usable open space is accessible by people. I'll think on that for a little bit. If any other commissioners have any other thoughts similar, I'd be interested to hear them. But that's all my questions for now.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I had a thought on the same on the same topic. I think Commissioner Leo alluded to it too. I was envisioning something similar to the signage and the frontage that is used around the Sharp Park natural wetland, like entering from Fairview Park or from the from the levee. Just something that sort of takes advantage of that natural wetland in Arroyo instead of just sensing it off to anybody to make that sort of a usable open space. Not that it would be something that would be heavily trafficked for environmental reasons, but just something that calls attention to it and activates that space a little bit.
Commissioner Ferguson, could you, could you remind me more specifically where the area is in question?
I guess the the frontage area, the the transition between the hardscape and the undeveloped space, the south of the project.
I think we would need to look more specifically. There are some grade differentials there, and you'll recall that there is some proposed decking, for instance, to help level off that area and to to render it safe for open space use or usable open space. I'm not familiar with whether that space would meet the ten percent grade requirement as it's currently designed. And so that's probably something that would require some further analysis, since you were looking to formalize and to count that towards usable open space, for example. Are there other comments or other questions at this point or other items of information that folks feel like they want to elicit as they're considering that? Maybe this is the appropriate time to sort of work our way through the membership and sort of see where we are with respect to the the project and figure out whether or not we've got consensus building around any particular direction or any particular you know, felt need for other information. Maybe Commissioner Damarra, I think I'd start with you and ask what you what you think at this point.
Well, as I mentioned before, we certainly need a development. I liked the way the way the development looks. I think maybe there's some some additional things we can consider with the the southern portion of the property. Maybe there's a way to enhance that that wetland. There could be some additional considerations to the area between the community center parking lot and that that empty area of of an observational boardwalk along there that then can be used as part of this open space observational of that wetland. So people people can maybe make use of it that way. I guess there's still some, you know, challenges of of both the commercial parking available and and kind of the the agreements between the city and the developer, which we're not kind of considering. But but I I also heavily use that area and I can see some concerns about traffic patterns and pedestrian patterns walking through that area. But but overall, I think it's a great place for this kind of development. So I'll just leave it at that at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Damarra. Commissioner Leo.
I have similar thoughts. I think this is, I'm generally in favor of this project. It's an infill project. It's, the land was previously developed and was demolished several years ago. So it's not a disturbed land. It provides much-needed housing at a time when when we continue to be in a region that needs housing. And it provides some below-market rate housing as well. And also it provides commercial space in an area that'd be great for it, right on the street frontage. This project has a lot of things going with it, going forward, I mean. So generally, I'm in favor of this project and and yeah, it's not potentially perfect, but I think it has enough good things going for it where I would be comfortable voting in favor of it tonight. It's kind of where I'm currently currently standing, given all the the information we've been provided, as well as the the comments from the public applicant and my my colleagues here. So that's kind of where I'm currently landing. As we were, I do actually have a question. I was thinking more, what I'm kind of stuck with right now is the parking and kind of changes to the front of the community center. And I actually had a question, I think, maybe for staff, whether it was in our purview to potentially add a condition of approval, which I don't think is in there right now in terms of for any of those parking places to be I don't think is in there right now in terms of for any of those parking places to be EV provided. I don't think we have any EV parking at the community center right now. I could be misspoken on there, but I think that would be a great addition. If we're talking about improvements to parking, that would be a great improvement. So I guess question to staff is is that within our purview this evening to add that as a condition of approval for the parking improvements in the front of the community center?
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. I think we would need to talk more about why the project would have an impact that requires electric vehicle parking to be installed if it were to be a condition of approval. I think another alternative is to consider in your recommendation to the council in the development agreement that public benefits warrant installation of an electrical vehicle charging station or whatever number. There are some some practical complexities with installing those in terms of finding the available power source, ensuring that the capacity is sufficient, trenching, repaving the area that's trenched to install that, maintenance obligations, who's paying for the electricity, and so on. So they are a bit complex, even though they're small improvements, so to speak. And so I think to whatever extent that there's interest among the commission, that probably packaging that as a recommendation in relation to the public benefits of the development agreement would be my recommendation as to where to to seek to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Ferguson, it's your hand up.
Yeah, I just was gonna address what Commissioner Lee and Mr. Murdock were talking about. I I feel like the negotiations already been had between the city and the developer as to those improvements, adding those parking spaces. It was something that they wanted for their improvements that I I feel a little uncomfortable now adding after the fact to negotiations that's already happened between these two parties. Just as far as a good bait of negotiation, this is something they've worked out already, and I I think there actually could be substantial costs to adding those now to the community center, assuming the power would come from the community center.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Maybe as long as we're we're talking with you, maybe I'd ask you to perhaps share your your perspective as to kind of where we are at this point.
Sure, I've been kind of grappling with this one all day. My knee jerk was the the number and scope of deviations and just the, you know, the mouthful of even the the title that we're receiving was daunting. And then as I thought about it more, I kept coming back to the regional housing needs and door requirements and just the the scale of the task to, it would be like 100 of these. We have to figure out where to place in order to meet the needs we're trying to meet over the next several years, so it's drops in the bucket, although it seems like a substantial project, right? It's its decade largest in the last seven years. But I I guess, given all that and given that it checks most of the boxes, what Pacific is trying to do for a developmental standpoint, I would definitely be in favor of voting for it tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson.
Chair Niblin, please make a remark on the the discussion a moment ago about the development agreement. I just want to ensure the commission understands where that discussion could occur if there's interest among the commission. And so just to be clear, I understand Commissioner Ferguson's concerns about the negotiations and so on. But it is a requirement of the municipal code for the commission to make a recommendation on the six criteria for approval of a development agreement. Those are covered on packet page thirty-two through thirty-four. And I just want to draw the commission's attention to one of the the criteria for approval, and that's the ability of an applicant to address public facility needs and financing obligations. And so while the commission wouldn't have the ability to require that as part of the development agreement, the the commission is making a recommendation on the development agreement and the totality of its provisions to the city council in relation to those criteria for approval. And so I think there is room for that discussion to occur if a majority of the commission was interested. But certainly I do understand Commissioner Ferguson's concerns and perhaps those concerns of others that seems like a lot of negotiation negotiation has gone into this, which is the case. But it's not a done deal, and it's the commission's role in this case to to advise and make a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock for that clarification. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Godwin and ask for his sense of things at this point.
My opinion is we need the lower-cost housing. This looks like a good site for it. So overall, I'm in favor of the project. I think there's a couple of things we need to add to this. I like Commissioner Damarat's boardwalk idea of making that the wetland space a little more usable for humans. I like the idea of adding an electric car charger or two. And they vary very, very much in cost from pretty inexpensive ones to quite expensive ones. I think we need to constrain that for the community center parking as part of the project. And I like the idea of parking stackers to solve the parking problem. If those three things were included, I could vote for it tonight. Without any, all of those, I think I'd be, I still have questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Berman, just I'll come to you.
Thank you. Despite all my questions, I I too am in favor of this project. I think it's a good infill housing location. It was a big packet, and so of course I had a lot of questions, which kind of reminds me, and I don't know if I'm if I just fathomed this, but I believe I read something in the packet that did mention informational signs at the the observation deck, and that made me really happy. So that's kind of in line with what was suggested by Commissioner Ferguson. I think the observation deck is more usable landscape or usable area, open space, than just kind of landscaping throughout the parking lot. I've been trying to keep notes of some of the things we want to potentially add to the project or consider requesting. One that has not been spoken about, but I'm in favor of, is the heritage tree replacement requirement. I think one of the community members mentioned this could be a good opportunity to implement the three-to-one ratio that we've recently implemented on other projects. I am in favor of the three-to-one tree replacement ratio for the heritage trees that will be removed. So just as a heads up to staff, so we might want to consider that, and I'm not quite sure exactly what the standard box tree size is or what we've consistently implemented on other projects, but I think it'd be nice to keep that consistent. Of course, staff presented the development agreement revision to section five point one point one. But then also, we've talked about adding a condition condition of approval for the developer to coordinate with the single-family homeowner where the storm drain connection will be made. And parking is the only other thing that I'm still pretty fuzzy on, and it's it's just awkward to me that although the numbers of the staff report don't tally up the parking that will eventually be proposed at the community center. Everyone seems to be in agreement that those parking stalls or overflow parking in the community center will be needed. I agree that usually that parking lot for the community center is oversized and it's rarely full. But it's it's awkward to me to be dependent on something that isn't really defined in what we're reviewing.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I I guess, you know, I I kind of share, well, I I think I share the views of just about everyone that's spoken. I I think Commissioner Lee's comments are are, you know, sort of probably closest to mine. I'd be prepared to move forward with the project this evening. I do agree that, and and I did have sort of visceral reaction, very similar to Commissioner Ferguson's in the sense that, you know, we, you know, just, you know, a significant number of things that need to happen in order for this project to move forward, both by way of recommendations with respect to legislative actions and some of these standard discretionary things that we would typically be asked to pass on. But development of an infill nature, kind of where we're talking about, is a complex matter. And it's very clear to me that staff has worked very hard and at length with the with developers to sort of navigate this this project to a place where it's where it's it's viable. I think that the the needs addressed are are significant, the needs for housing, the needs for below-market rate housing, the significant contribution to affordable housing fund. I think all of those are are benefits. I think that the benefits that would flow through development agreement. I had a couple of questions, I guess, just to to clarify. Commissioner Godwin had a, I think, a really commendable idea regarding sort of the the possibility of a of maybe some form of a, I don't think it was boardwalk, that was the term used, but sort of observation kind of a area. And is that something that could be contemplated through a recommendation to the to the city council by way of a public benefit in a development agreement? Is that within, can we treat that in a similar way to the way we were talking about the possibility of electric vehicle chargers?
I would think so, Chair Niblin. You know, unlike the typical response you get from staff that we need to find a nexus to the impact to require something, effectively, all options are on the table with respect to a development agreement. It's rare that the city negotiates, uncommon at least. It's only the second that I'm aware of in recent years, and so the commission does have some latitude. I would just ask that they ground it in the six criteria so that they can find some relationship to those criteria in the planning commission's role that, in my opinion, it likely would be appropriate to recommend that to the council. And and they may accept or reject that recommendation or direct further negotiations to accomplish, you know, some or all of the commission's recommendations in that regard.
Thank you. Well, I would certainly be in favor of trying to figure out some way to to link that to the criteria for development agreement as we as we kind of walk through it. The electrical car, you know, charger station idea as well, I'd be in favor of. I think the the parking stackers, I, my sense of that is that might require quite a bit more analysis than than perhaps would 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 allow us to proceed this evening. I'd be in favor of a three-to-one tree replacement ratio. I I wanted to clarify, though. I thought I heard that the number of trees being sort of proposed would be sort of in excess of that ratio. Is that would it be staff's view that that three-to-one ratio, if we were going to impose it, is being met here?
I believe that's the case, Chair Niblin. I'm trying to track down the specific figures. I think it's upwards of twenty-seven additional Arroyo willows that are proposed to be planted along the the side and the rear of the property. And then perhaps as many as thirteen other trees of various species. And so I think what would be helpful is if, you know, given that the number seems to satisfy that that three-to-one or exceed the three-to-one, if there was some concern about the particular species, I think there has been a biologist biologist's recommendation that the Arroyo willows would be an appropriate planting. It would complement the existing biology of the the project area. But, you know, it's possible that that staff could, you know, evaluate other species that may also be compatible and perhaps larger sizes if that's if that's part of the concern.
Well, I I think my my question is really prompted by my sort of strong agreement with Commissioner Berman's perspective. So maybe I'll ask her to to weigh in further. She's got other stuff to add.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I would feel more comfortable if we at least made some commitment to a certain amount of trees that need to be planted, whether it's the three-to-one or the twenty-seven willows that are planned already. And this because I understand fully that once, when projects are in the planning phase, there isn't as much consideration to cost, but as as a project gets closer to construction, there's often value engineering. And a lot of times, the size or the the amount of trees being planted will be on the docket to be removed. So I just want to make sure there's a commitment where those those trees or or the minimum amount of trees doesn't get removed from the project.
Thank you. I I again, would just state that I'd be in agree agreement with any motions who approve the project that included that as a specific requirement. And similarly, a condition of approval that specifically required appropriate, you know, prior coordination with single-family property owner who may be dealing with the the stormwater easement that we were talking about. So anyway, I I'd be, again, in favor of a motion this evening that broadly contemplated those things. Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I just needed to ask a question about this tree ratio. Does that include the dead tree? It seems like removing the dead tree is prudent with or without replacement.
Well, Commissioner Damarat, I think, has had some interest in that particular issue on a prior project as well. The heritage tree ordinance does not discriminate against a living or dead tree in terms of its removal and replacement. And so I think I've been contemplating that it would be three-to-one on the three heritage tree removal for a minimum of nine replacement trees.
Okay, now I understand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. I just had a clarification question on the kind of the boardwalk discussion we've been having in other commissions. So the way I'm envisioning this conversation, please correct me if I'm interpreting this incorrectly, is is from the basically the observation platform at the southern end of the property or southern end of the development. There'd be some sort of pathway that would make some sort of horseshoe shape through the undeveloped portion of this parcel. Is that the boardwalk that were that has been mentioned? I think either Commissioner Godwin or, I'm I'm not sure.
Right, I was gonna, I was gonna ask Commissioner Godwin to maybe address kind of what the contemplation was.
Yeah, that was, I was interested in some sort of restricted path through that area. I was thinking if it was above-ground and more kind of an elevated path on on post, it would be less disturbing to the birds, but, you know.
Yeah, okay, that's, thank you. Similar to some of the boardwalks, maybe through like Maury Point or something, it's kind of elevated when you have some of the the water that passes underneath. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that.
That's what I was envisioning.
Okay, thank you. And then I think that was my only other other point here. So I will save the rest of my time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I don't see other hands at this point, so you know, we could, we could, of course, see if there's further comment or deliberation or, you know, also if somebody felt like they had kind of digested everything that's been shared, you know, a motion would also be in order if there was somebody who was inclined to undertake that. Commissioner Ferguson.
And being inclined, could you give me about thirty seconds to collect my thoughts on this condition of approval?
I'll give you more than thirty seconds. You let me know when you're you're ready and I'll I'll pull my my jets for them.
And Chair Niblin, just for the commission's information, we do have language for a potential condition of approval related to the adjacent property owner notification in in relation to the overflow stormwater drain improvement. So that is available if the commission or the maker of the motion is interested.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson will likely ask you for it.
Yes, please. So, Mr. Murdock, do you remind me, the nine trees was the number if we were going to use three-to-one?
That's correct, for the heritage tree replacement, yes.
And do you recall the, there was a pot sizing we've been using for the last few, I I don't know off the top of my head, that we've set as as a minimum?
Yes, Commissioner Ferguson, and I do have language for a potential condition to address that. It's a twenty-four-inch box size. That's, I think, typically what Commissioner Hauser has recommended, and she seems to have some expertise in that area. What I would suggest, or at least an offer for the commission's consideration, is perhaps not to consider all of the trees to be that size, but some proportion of them. It's it's my understanding, you know, speaking It's my understanding, you know, speaking to arborists and other experts, that commonly smaller trees that are installed have a higher adaptability and ability to survive because they grow and actually adjust to the planting site. It can be a bit of a shock, from what I understand, for larger trees like 24-inch box. So even though they look better sooner, they may not have as favorable of long-term performance and survivability. So assuming that that's the case, you may consider some proportion to be that size. Maybe it's the nine trees, maybe it's some percentage. I prepared draft language of 20%, but perhaps that could be replaced with nine. But the language that I would suggest to consider is, related to the 27 arroyo willow plantings, not less than 20% or nine, as the case may be, of the replacement trees shall be a minimum 24-inch box size.
Commissioner Domarat, I see your hand up. Did you have?
Is there some kind of survivability of these 20-something trees that would revive? Is there something in regulation that says after X amount of years, if they don't survive, you have to replant? I mean, do, I mean, kind of, what's the story on that? And then the other issue would be, I'm certainly for three-to-one, that doesn't trouble me, but I'm wondering if there's, if there was some type of improvement we can make to the wetland that would make it more productive, maybe we can offset the three-to-one to two-to-one or one-to-one in lieu of, you know, then making some improvements to the wetland at that point. So that's just something to think about.
Yes, Commissioner Domarat, with respect to the landscaping, there is more than one way to go about it. Some people are familiar with particular performance standards, often you'll see them as part of a SEQA document and a mitigation measure that, you know, after three years, not less than 90% of the plantings will survive or something along those lines. What we have, which I think, I'm biased, but I think is better, is Condition of Approval 18 on packet page 88, and it requires the plantings shown in the landscaping plan, all of them, to be maintained in a healthful condition and replaced when needed and determined by the planning director. So that requires all of them to be maintained. Some of them may die, you know, now and then, and if that's the case, they need to be replaced. And so it ensures, you know, arguably 100% survivability over time, rather than, you know, 90% at three years or some other metric. And so it's for the duration of the project and not some, you know, initial term, for example.
If the group consensus, they're ready to hear it, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
I move that the planning commission adopts the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report to approve the site development permit PST 81116, use permit UP 7616, parking exception PE 18319, sign permit S 12919, vesting tentative subdivision maps SUB 23316, and heritage tree removal authorization, subject to conditions of approval in Exhibit A of the resolution, and to recommend to City Council approval of a resolution to approve general plan amendment GPA 9619, and ordinances to approve development agreement DA 421, rezoning RZ 19416, and text amendment TA 11619, and incorporate all maps, written records, reports, and testimony into the record by reference, including also as conditions of approval, a condition of approval to coordinate with adjoining property owner for the storm drain tie-in as required by the city. Perhaps, Chris, if you can help me out with some of that language. Condition of approval to include a raised and restricted boardwalk path to utilize and to utilize the natural wetland space at the south end of the property, as well as a condition of approval to replace each heritage tree removed with a ratio of at least three-to-one for a total of nine minimum trees, with at least 20% of those to be a minimum 24-inch box size.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Allow me to read the language about the property notification, property owner notification first, and then I may need some clarification on the specific elements of the conditions of approval that you mentioned. And so the condition of approval language that staff recommends related to the property owner notification is, upon final map approval, the applicant shall provide written notice to the adjacent single-family residential property owner at the point of connection for the emergency overflow shown on sheet TM-3, not less than 90 days prior to commencing the improvement located in the city's storm drain easement. The improvement may proceed with the improvement design as reviewed and approved by the city engineer upon the applicant's fulfillment of this obligation.
Would it be possible to amend that to be not less than 90 days in writing with also a follow-up of 48 hours prior to the commencement of work?
Assistant City Attorney Sharma, any concern with that modification?
No, no concerns from the state attorney.
A clarification question regarding the deck condition that Commissioner Ferguson mentioned. Are you pursuing the deck boardwalk idea where it would be installed above the wetland in the undeveloped area or the deck that's already proposed in the plans?
Correct. I was proposing an additional deck raised and restricted so that it was, people would be walking on an elevated boardwalk without the ability to leave that boardwalk through the wetlands, in addition to the viewing deck that they had included in the plans.
I'm curious if we could hear from the applicant if they're willing to add an improvement.
And Chair Niblin, I think staff may also want an opportunity to provide some considerations, but we're discussing right now.
Thank you. Will, Mr. Wilti?
I, if you want me to say, I think that the owners would be willing to do that to some extent. Of course, they would want to work with the biology consultant to find the proper size, and then we would have to determine, you know, what would be the proper access to that. For instance, you know, with the overall kind of global conceptualization we had of how this land gets used in relation to the community center, we weren't necessarily fencing off and precluding folks, you know, walking down our walkways or driveway, for instance, to that boardwalk that we were proposing at the end of the driveway. If this one was to be, you know, an expanded version of that, I know that the biological consultant might have some concern about making it too invasive, as I think you alluded to. And so finding the proper size would be appropriate. So if it could be, you know, when you go to a national park, et cetera, you see these that are, you know, sort of an expanded version of a walking boardwalk cantilever deck. And so sort of like with a passing lane and an observation lane, and so maybe, you know, not larger than eight feet wide, if we could leave it, you know, keep it to some, you know, concept like that, I think that would be, you know, that would make everybody happy. And it would, I think it would be a nice enhancement. Now I have to go back and take my lumps with Brendan. Excuse me.
And Chair Niblin, I did want to offer an opportunity for our SEQA consultant Rod Stinson to offer any thoughts about that potential additional work in the wetlands area.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
Yeah, good evening, Chair Commissioners. Yeah, I would just add that if you are extending improvements into that wetland area, that's an additional potential area of impact to wetlands that wasn't necessarily addressed in the SEQA document. We do, we did identify a certain number of acres of wetlands that would be potentially impacted and have mitigation measures requiring a no-net loss. So I would just note that the mitigation measure wouldn't necessarily change, but the amount of acres that were identified as being impacted and would need to be mitigated for would slightly change potentially based on what this final boardwalk design looks like.
Thank you.
And Chair Niblin, just before we go too far, I did want to confirm with the maker of the motion, did the motion also include the amendments to the development agreement language in section 5.1 that I read at the beginning of the public hearing?
Yes, it did.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson.
So we do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second motion.
So we have a motion and we have a second. We get a little call vote, please.
And so to the motion as drafted in the staff report as the recommended motion for approval with the amendment to section 5.1 of the development agreement as read into the record by staff during the public hearing, and a new condition of approval for notification to the adjacent property owner not less than 90 days prior, and again, 48 hours prior as read into the record, and a requirement for three-to-one heritage tree replacement ratio and not less than 20% of the arroyo willows installed at a 24-inch box size, and the creation of an additional raised walkway for wetlands interpretation. Did I capture the points of the motion, Commissioner Ferguson?
Perfectly.
Terrific, thank you.
I see that Commissioner Berman has her hand up, or her hand up, I want to do.
Yes, sorry, delayed, delayed hand. I'm sure it's fine, but I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Stinson said about expanding the amount of impact on the previously assumed undeveloped land. And I'm wondering, we need to hear from the city attorney on if that may have any SEQA ramifications? I'm sure it's such a small square footage, but I'm wondering if there is any concern that this would trigger another level of SEQA requirements?
That would be a fact-specific investigation, so I would defer to Mr. Stinson on that point.
And Rod, can you please elaborate on what the no-net loss means in this context? If we are potentially losing additional wetlands, where would that offsetting mitigation occur?
Yeah, so the mitigation measure already requires a wetland delineation to be verified by the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers, and the applicant to obtain a section 404 permit to fill wetlands. And right now, it requires a no-net loss, so basically, they would need to either pay into a mitigation bank or set, or purchase, basically would be to purchase wetlands out of a mitigation bank, equivalent to the amount of acreage that is being lost in this case. Right now, the wetland delineation that has been conducted so far has set 0.77 acres of wetlands as being impacted. So to the extent that that increases based off of the design of this deck, that number would go up, and the applicant would be then responsible for mitigating an additional amount of acres. But the mitigation measure language doesn't necessarily need to change because it doesn't specify how many acres.
Okay, and you mentioned a fee for the mitigation, and the applicant's already paying a fee, correct?
They would be required to pay the fee through the 404 permitting process to work with Army Corps, but it's, it would be through a mitigation bank.
Okay, but that requirement is already triggered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Berman? So we'll go back then to Commissioner Ferguson's motion, and, you know, actually, I'm sorry, I've drawn a blank on who seconded. Was that you, Commissioner Godwin? I'm sorry, Commissioner Domarat, my apologies. Commissioner Godwin, looks like you have a comment or question.
Yeah, I just had a comment. It did seem like the motion didn't include the electric car charger. Was that intentional or unintentional?
It didn't, and that was intentional.
Thank you.
Chair Niblin, are you calling the question?
Yeah, I think I will at this point.
Thank you. So as to the motion made by Commissioner Ferguson and seconded by Commissioner Domarat, Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
And that motion passed as six, eight, none opposed, and one recused.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for all the work putting that together, and commissioners for all the work negotiating that stuff now. So that will take us then to commission communications. I'll ask if there are any commission communications. And I have one, actually. I wanted to want to acknowledge and thank you all for your good wishes upon my appointment to be the county council, which will be effective on the 1st of April. And in light of that appointment, I'm going to resign from the planning commission effective as of the end of the month. So it's been, for me, an extraordinary privilege and honor to serve on the planning commission. I may have one more meeting, I don't know if we'll actually end up having two meetings this month, but if we do, I'll have one more. If not, this will be my last meeting, but it's been especially enriching and great experience just having had the opportunity to serve with you all, some of whom I don't know we've ever actually met in person. As I sit here and think about it, I feel like I know you well, but my hope is that we will, as we start moving around town more, get a chance to run into each other and visit in person. But anyway, I wanted to share that. And again, it's been a really, really significant honor and pleasure to work with you. Commissioner Berman?
Congratulations, Chair Niblin. Really excited. I hope that we cross paths again professionally or recreationally.
I hope so, thank you. Let's see here, then we'll move on to staff communications.
Thank you, Chair, and welcome back, Commissioner Hauser. Also, congratulations, Chair Niblin. We certainly will be sad to see you leave and the loss of your leadership here in this commission as a longstanding community servant and planning commissioner. All the staff offers its sincere thanks. I do want to remind the commissioners in the community that tomorrow is the last day for public comment on the Plan Pacifica draft environmental impact report or draft EIR. Public comments are due by 5:00 PM tomorrow, March 8th, and must be submitted in writing, either via email or dropped off probably at this point, hand-delivered, if not, you know, same-day courier, potentially to the city's offices at 540 Crespi Drive. So anybody that's interested should go to planpacifica.org and go to project documents at the top of the page, and they can access the draft EIR, draft general plan, and the draft Sharpton Park specific plan. The city has also released a draft EIR for the quarry reclamation plan, and so that's a reclamation of the closed quarry in the Rockaway Beach District, just west of Reyna Del Mar Avenue and Highway 1. It's a project that many in the community are likely It's a project that many in the community are likely to be interested in. So anyone that is interested can go to cityofpacifica.org and go to the planning department page and navigate to the environmental documents page. Comments on that draft EIR are due by 5:00 PM on April 4th. And then lastly, the city council has determined that in person meetings will resume, beginning with their meeting on March 14. And so our long run of Zoom meetings looks to be coming to an end, just as Commissioner Niblin is leaving and may have had the chance to meet everybody in person. But nevertheless, so the next planning commission meeting that we hold, which the first opportunity would be on March 21st, if we have that meeting, that would be held in person at 2212 Beach Boulevard, as we used to do it a couple of times a month, late into the night. There along Beach Boulevard and the council chambers. And so the city is exploring, per council direction, the ability for the public to continue to be able to dial in, to offer public comments remotely. It will be a new standalone system with a dial in phone number. We will not be continuing with a hybrid, you know, in person and Zoom option, for instance. So we are continuing testing of that system, and should it be ready, the instructions for that will be in the March 14th city council agenda. And similarly would be in any future agenda for the planning commission if and when that system is up and running. So that's all I had for staff communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Appreciate all that. So that then takes us to adjournment, and I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Hauser.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you for the motion to adjourn. Commissioner Lille.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Murdock, if we could have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Chair Niblin?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Everybody have a good night.
Night.
Good night.